We're going to get started. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's November 1st. I am Janice Tatarca. I am joined by John De Priest, Arthur Arsenal, Hugo Perdomo, Joe Mahoney, and Marilyn Vega Torres. We will soon be joined by Joan Cromwell, but we can get started without her. The first case in front of us is 2022-22-295 Eastern Ave., 295 Eastern Ave. LLC. When you come up, please be sure, all of you, to speak into the microphones. I will be reminding you regularly if that doesn't happen because you are being taped. So, on public television, there's somebody here for Spanish translation. If you need that, she can help you in the back. She's there. She can tell the young woman with the microphone. I can see? I can't see. Okay. Who is here? Can we? Let's get started, 2022-22-295 Eastern Ave.
Thank you. My name is Jared Argamet. I'm an attorney with Ruben Junius &amp; Rose with an office at 112 Water Street in Boston. Our team was before you in September. So, rather than go over the full presentation again, we have a shorter one tonight that Mr. De Priest will bring up. But we have our whole team again. So with me is Jackie Martin.
Okay. And let me just ask one question, John. This has already gone to the planning board.
Planning board recommended approval with -- sorry. The planning board recommended approval with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Later.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we were there. Sir?
Yes.
Which one did you want to open?
The short one for tonight. So, Jackie, that's --
The top one?
Yeah. November 1st.
If people want to see what he's presenting, you can come and stand up here. Just don't stand in front of the -- in front of us so we also can see.
Okay. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the proposal. It's a 114,000-square-foot light industrial warehouse building, has 133 parking spaces, 17 loading. This is a really good rendering because it shows the whole site. It's about a 19-acre site, I believe. And you'll notice that the -- most of the truck traffic is to the south of the building, towards the creek, and away from the MBTA and the Abutter, 305 Eastern Avenue. But there is considerable public access that we talked about, and of course, was very important to the planning board. Next slide, please. This puts it into context for those familiar with the site. So this is a former petroleum tank farm. The tanks were pulled some 15 or 20 years ago. So today, there are a couple industrial buildings at the southerly -- so south is at the top, actually. Southerly end of the building -- southerly end of the site. And then this is the old jetty that's sticking out into Chelsea Creek, which will be opened up to the public. Next slide, please. We wanted to focus on the site plan because when we left you in September, there were some specific questions that we didn't have complete answers, but we do now. So, snow storage, that's an important aspect. That's now shown at the lower-left and the top-right are the designated areas to make sure we have enough room when the plows come in. They can push the snow onto them, and the trucks and cars can still get through. There was a question also about the dumpster location. That's been located right in the middle, at the lower of the southerly wall. You'll see a dumpster enclosure. We can blow these up if needed. So that's accounted for. Other aspects of the site, we can -- I don't want to belabor because we talked about them last time, but to orient you, the entrance is from Eastern Avenue, both for the public and for tenants. The building is designed to have up to three warehouse tenants, so they each have their own office space. And then the trucks, as I say, are going to go into this wide paved area. The public will be able to walk, and we have our landscape architect here, Marie Adams, to give more detail, can go towards the water. But they can also circumnavigate the whole site. And so there's another employee parking lot at the northerly corner, at the top-right on this slide. And then there's a landscape path that's shown. The property line is actually outboard of that path quite a ways, so there's been a lot of attention to making sure there's a fence of some kind put there. We're proposing a split rail so that the public isn't confused, and they know that's the end of the path and not to go across it. And then there's, in the employee parking lot, the neighbor has an easement that crosses into it, and also our tenants may need to get into that parking lot without having to drive all the way around past the truck area. So we're proposing -- I wrote a letter today, and I've talked to the Abutter about it, a gate. So the gate would -- the default would be locked, but there would be a code, and so it'd be available for authorized people, but not the public to drive in there. We just want the public to come in off of Eastern Avenue. Next slide, please. Staff also wanted to make sure that we had our truck routes correct, and so we submitted this slide to staff. I'm sure this is going to be familiar to the board members, but essentially, if you come from the north on Route 1, you come off of Carter Street exit, and then you connect through a series of streets, and you essentially stay on the perimeter of Chelsea and out of the neighborhoods. That's a designated truck path and get to the Eastern Avenue entrance of the site, which is marked there. If you're coming southbound -- I'm sorry, northbound, you get off on Route 16 and exit onto Broadway, and it's a shorter loop, but it's the same loop. And we have our transportation engineer to give more detail. We want to make sure we have the truck route correct. Next slide, please. We also had questions. I'm not sure if it was just here or also at the planning board, but to make sure that our radii worked for the truck, make sure that if we're going to have trucks coming into this facility, they can get in and out. So this is the turn coming from the south on Eastern into the site. Next slide. And then this is out again, going north. So again, the radii have been checked and double-checked to make sure we have adequate room, and the curbs are in the right place.
John, are you comfortable? Is the planning department comfortable with that?
Yeah. Final slide. So, one thing that I wanted to note is that there is going to be a post-occupancy monitoring of three intersections. And again, transportation planner Ken Cram and Mr. De Priest can go into detail, but the three intersections are the major ones you would expect. So, once the building is fully occupied, we'll, at our expense, monitor Eastern Ave. at Chelsea Street by that bridge, Eastern Ave. at Crescent Avenue, and Eastern Ave. at Broadway, those three pinch points. And if it's necessary to retime the lights, that's our responsibility. The board would have us do that. So I wanted to make clear that'll be a condition of approval. Those were the points that were left open last time. Again, our whole team is here. I don't want to -- you have a long agenda, so I didn't want to take up more time than you need.
Okay. Thank you for answering those. Does the board have any questions before I open it up to the public again?
Can you remind us about the lighting, the outside lighting?
Yes. The lighting, we have not submitted a plan yet, and that's deliberate because we -- it will have to go through staff. That will also be a condition of approval. We'll have to come back with a lighting and a photometric. We have not submitted one. Part of the issue is access by the public. We're proposing at this area, because it's an industrial facility, that the access by the public be dawn to dusk rather than 24/7, which would be different lighting. And we would work that out with staff, subject to your approval.
Okay. Okay. This is -- the public hearing on this is still open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? Sir? Please get to your microphone and --
Hi. My name is Kurt Kuziak. I'm an attorney at Fitch Law Partners at 84 State Street in Boston, and I represent the adjacent landowner at 305 Eastern.
Mr. Manager, could you please open the door? Thank you.
Gliptal is the manufacturing facility that's right next door. Gliptal, as you may recall from the initial hearing, had two main concerns. The first one was safety with respect to people passing through their property in order to get to the creek front area there. And because there's a very heavy truck traffic on that property, we were concerned with, at times, when people would be using the frontage there, that they would be wandering through, and there would be real safety concerns with the traffic. That's been a recurrent issue over the years, and I think we have resolved that issue with respect to the fence that's being put up between the two properties.
Will include a gate.
And we've agreed that -- the two sides have agreed to put a gate there.
Okay.
That would be a coded locked gate. I think that's going to resolve the issue, and it's going to stop, at least stop, traffic from going down there, civilian traffic and cars and things like that. And we hope that the fence will also stop kids from going through. It is a split-rail fence at present, so we're hoping to upgrade that a little bit to make it a little bit more of an obstacle for people to pass through there and get in front of trucks and not get hit by trucks and that sort of thing. So that's one thing we've been discussing as far as upgrading that fence. But with respect to what this board, what we're asking from you is just a condition that that gate be part of the project, that a coded locking gate be part of the project, and that the fence be slightly more substantial than a split-rail fence. We're not asking for, you know, as we said, it's -- we're not looking for concertina wire or anything like that, but just something that presents a little bit more of an obstacle with respect to kids jumping through there and getting hit by a truck, that sort of thing. The second issue that you're aware of is that we had had flooding, some flooding issues on the property. For the past 50-plus years, there had been an arrangement in place where my client's property at 305 had had a drain that went through 295's property, and that had effectively prevented flooding on that property. That has disintegrated slightly over time, and there's been more flooding issues that have come up. With this project, a new drainage system is being built on the property that would not include this drain. So our main concern was that because this drain would not be kept up, that would again cause major flooding issues on the property. And in fact, it's -- that started slowly happening already because that drain has been plugged over time. So what we're doing is we're working between our engineers right now to try to come up with a solution to get a drainage easement over their property to allow us to, you know, build an area to collect water in the back of Gliptal's property, get a pump in there and to pump that through the 295 property that -- and it's really not going under any buildings or anything like that. It's just through, basically, under grass to the creek and get that water drained so that the issue doesn't arise again. So that's kind of an update on where we are there, and we're trying to work out those engineering issues now.
Sounds like you've made good progress.
We are making some progress, yes.
Good thing. I don't know. I mean, I can understand when it comes to site planning that we, as a board, have the authority to talk about or to ask the planning department to approve what kind of gate or fence would go there. I don't know what our rights are over easements on for water. We have -- that's not within our purview.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I mean, clearly, we can only result -- talk about what we can talk about, and we can talk about the fence and the gate. I don't know that we have the authority.
I don't know that you do have rights with respect to an easement. The authority of -- as my understanding is, the authority of the board here would be to say, okay, you can't do something on your property that would enhance or cause flooding on an adjacent property. This technically meets that basis or requirement, there's a specific term, because they are undoing the present situation that would potentially cause flooding on our property. So, yes, the development could cause a problem, but they are cooperating between the engineers. We're very hopeful that an easement will be arranged so that eventuality will not happen, and we will be able to get our own sort of pumping system in place and allow that to occur. So, I don't know where that puts --
Yeah, I just --
The CBA.
Yeah.
But, you know, we are working on it. My hope is that that will continue to work, we'll work on that, and if there are any problems, we'll bring it to you.
And again, obviously, whatever the courts may have to resolve, the courts have to resolve it. We can't --
Understood.
It's not our purview, so.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I just want to reiterate that the city --
For the record, you have to introduce yourself. I'm sorry.
Thomas Ambrosino. I'm the city manager, and I want to let the board know that the city's administration is in full support of this project. We, I should say "we," but it's really our housing community development partner in Carl Allen in particular, have worked with these owners for over two years to ensure that this development occurred in a way that benefited the city, and this one does. It not only redevelops this vacant parcel into something that will generate, that will aesthetically enhance the area and generate tax dollars for the city, but it also provides robust public access to the waterfront here. And they work closely with the city and with Green Roots to ensure that the access is what the public deserves, and it's really great public access for this area. With respect to the issues with their owners, the city has encouraged them to work out their differences, and we anticipate that as sophisticated businesses, they can do that. I don't -- that shouldn't hold up the requested permits. The one thing I do want to ask is this. The developers have agreed to pay the city's new linkage fee. Now, that was approved by the legislature. We have not yet implemented it locally with the required ordinance, but there is a draft ordinance kicking around for the council's review, and the developers have agreed to pay what is in that draft ordinance, which is $12.50 per square foot for a commercial building for every square foot above $25,000. The city would like that listed as a condition. In order to do that, however, you do have to also, at the same time, waive the Community Improvement Trust Fund fee because this linkage fee is intended to become the successor to the Community Improvement Trust Fund fee. We're not going to require both. So when the ordinance gets approved for the linkage fee, the Community Improvement Trust Fund fee will be repealed, and we will do that at the same time with the council. But right now, you would have to, you have to vote as part of your decision to waive that fee, which you have the right to do under that ordinance. And I asked you to do that, and instead impose this linkage fee, which the developer has agreed to pay.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. And so, in closing, I would urge you to grant the permit this evening.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Sarah Roseanne, you can be next.
Carl Allen. I'm the Economic Development Planner for the City of Chelsea, and I just want to very briefly reiterate what the city manager just said. This parcel is a key to our economic development strategy. It's going to accomplish the two major objectives of our municipal harbor plan, which is to increase job density on the waterfront and to provide public access to the waterfront. This is one of the three parcels that was removed from the designated port area by the boundary review that was done in 2016, and it's taken a long time to get us to this point where we're actually going to see productive use of that space. So I urge the board to adopt or to issue the permits that have been requested with conditions. Thank you.
Roseanne?
Good evening. Roseanne Bonjovani. I know it's so high. Okay. But then it falls out at me. Roseanne Bonjovani, Executive Director of Green Roots and Chelsea resident. I want to support what Tom said earlier. The proponents of this site have been working with the community for well over two years. They had a number of community visioning sessions, including a site walk back in May of 2021 with over 50 people, getting them out onto the Chelsea Creek to ask them what they would like to see. Over the course of the last two years, we pushed back on the proponents and asked them to create even more robust community access to the Chelsea Creek, and they ended up providing all of that and more. And so, just for context, the back, you know, the history of this site is that 10 or 15 years ago, there was a proposal to have a Dirty Diesel power plant on this site, and we all together, the whole community, fought that power plant. And to turn around now, 15 years later, and be able to have robust community access to the Chelsea Creek is really wonderful. We definitely have some concerns with the property. It is a logistics center, and so we know that there is truck traffic that will be there, but we trust that the city and the proponents will work together to address the truck traffic situation and also to work through the construction schedule so that it doesn't impact the nearby elementary school. We sent a letter a few months back when this was originally in front of you, and I hope that you have it. There were several recommendations. I'd like to just state our support for the project, but also note, as Tom was saying earlier, there are linkage fees, but one of the agreements that the proponents made to the community and to the city, I think, with Carl being the lead, was they agreed to pay $500,000 to the City of Chelsea for future connections to the Forbes site. Ironically, we're all talking about the Forbes site now. This would be an amazing opportunity for future connections to that waterfront access. We don't want the waterfront access to stop or just be bookend at 295, but for us to always continue to create those waterfront accesses all along our waterfront. And so that money should be included as a condition in your permit so that we can create that future access. But we're very, very supportive of the robust community access and the designs and the artwork and all of the lighting that they have worked on, and they also were really great to live up to our commitment to language justice in all of our public meetings and hearings and all of the written materials they provided. They did so in Spanish and English, so I really think that they did quite a good job with the community engagement and outreach. So, thank you for hearing our thoughts and concerns. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You can't go anywhere. And is anyone else who wishes to speak on this? This is your last opportunity, okay? There being none, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing. Is, John, what is the planning department's recommendations on this?
The permitting department proposes approval with standard conditions as applicable, access to the site by the public as proposed, parking for public access as proposed, impact fee as agreed, $12.50 per square foot for over 25,000 square foot, and that would be in lieu of the Community Improvement Tax Fund --
Trust Fund.
-- trust fund payment. Allow future access to the abutting Forbes site, and the board accepts the $500,000 to a design and construction of a public access to the abutting lot. All BEP required improvements be installed, stop sign and stop line at the exit driveway. Implement all recommendations of the traffic report at the petitioner's expense, signage plan, design review, management plan for implementation of the TDM, public access network management and maintenance plan, permanent public art mural on a building facade to be competed by a local artist, a lighting plan, the monitoring of the three intersections that were discussed earlier, and a gate on the fence at the Abutter's property.
Well, and that would be part of design review, I expect. Yeah. Okay. That being said, do we have any thoughts or a recommendation on this?
[inaudible]
Oh, I guess, let me -- they'll submit that to the plan. Let me ask from a perspective of, I guess, we would first vote to see whether or not we're going to accept it and then vote to waive, just from the Community Improvement Trust Fund, or what's the process? I mean, does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
Okay. So I guess the first thing that we should want to do is, before we go any further, let's do the easy part, is there a motion to waive the Community Improvement Trust Fund? Made by Joe, seconded by Arthur. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that's one thing. Now, is there a motion on the special permit? Okay. Go ahead, Arthur.
I make a motion to accept a special permit with the conditions as noted by John De Priest.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know you're comprehensive together. Thank you very much.
Who made the second?
Seconded by Marilyn. Oh, by Joe. I'm sorry, by Joe. Seconded by Joe. Oh, pick whoever. Who made the second? Joe. Okay. The next case is 2022-25-70 Fremont Ave. There is, do we need a motion to move this to December? To move this to the December 13th meeting? Do I have a motion? You go. You go made a motion to move it? Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Okay. 2022-26-70 Prescott Ave. Erin Griffin. Also, we need a motion to move this to December 13th. Joe, second. You go. All in favor? Okay. Okay, gonna be a little -- let's get things moving, guys. Okay, the next case is 2022-27-168-170 Maverick Street. Peter M. Tufts, a special permit in variance seeking approval for the construction of a four-family dwelling structure, which is allowed, subject to the issuance of a special permit, which does not meet the current minimum zoning requirement for a lot area. This, we will be hearing this today, but we will not be deciding on this today. We'll be moving it to the December 13th meeting, and it will go to the planning board on the 29th, which is later than usual because of the holiday. Okay. So we just need the people to be a little quiet outside, so.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Please?
If I may?
Absolutely. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Anthony Rossi here on behalf of the petitioner. I do have David Choi, who's the Architect of Record. Mr. Tufts, who is the owner of the property, is also in the assembly.
Wait a minute. John's got to go tell people to be quiet.
And, if I may.
Good.
And I believe you do have the renderings on the buildings. Essentially, the only relief that's being sought --
Would you speak a little? [inaudible]
A little louder, yeah.
[inaudible] Essentially, the only relief that's being sought is for lot size. There is no other variances, setbacks. If you look at the dimensional regulation shot, everything the dimensional regulation shot was built within the dimensional regs. So the current site was an existing commercial building that was pretty much condemned over the years. My client acquired the property. I believe he may have come before the board in the past regarding a larger use on the property. After speaking with planning development and also some of the city councilmen and the neighbors, we downsized the project. I didn't represent them then, but since my representation, we redesigned the project to be something that's more comparable to what's in the neighborhood and the amount of units that they actually wanted. So we try to make it as code compliant and building compliant as possible. I have David Choi here, who can talk a little bit about the renderings and the design aspect of this, but it will consist of four, basically four units, townhouses front and back, with each having two parking spaces for each unit compliant, one inside and one outside. Correct, David? And it shows you the exterior of the structure. Everything is open space. Everything meets all the requirements on it. The only thing is, under the current zoning, it doesn't meet the dimensional regs. Even though this is a pre-existing structure, the use is different. It went from being a commercial structure, the contractor's yard, per se, to now four residential units, but it actually mirrors more than what's in the neighborhood today than what it was when this site was used as a contractor's yard.
So you're saying you're building it in the dimensions of the existing structure?
No, we're building it with the dimensions of the zoning setbacks.
Okay. All right.
So, the existing structure was a pretty large footprint, and it's pretty much condemned and was torn down and so forth. But my client originally purchased it to put his contractor's yard for his type of use. He does a lot of site work through municipalities. But after looking at the site and listening to the neighborhood and what they wanted to see there, we revamped the project as a whole to make it now four residential dwellings, more comparable to what's in the neighborhood as a whole. And as far as the dimensional regs, I am met in relation to the setbacks, front yard setback, side yard setback, elevation, height, FAR landscaping. The only thing we can't meet is a lot size because that's a lot size.
Okay.
So, and that's essentially the only relief. The renderings were basically what John showed you. You can see where the, what the site is today. And those are the relief. So I think we, everything else is gone because we changed it, correct, John? With the new plans, we corrected all the violations. I think there was only one violation now, and it was for the lot size, based on the new denial letter.
There is two lot size requirements. One is the minimum lot, and one is the minimum lot area per unit. So that's why there's two variances listed.
Correct. Essentially, on the same thing. Yes.
Same concept. Okay. Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
The other street was over, there's two apartments on the other side.
Correct.
What would be the address for those houses? It would be Maverick, but what would be the other street?
David, I think the city does it based on where the curb cut is, so it will have the other street address on it.
Right. So it's officially a Maverick Street. I'm sorry. Yeah, Maverick Street.
Correct. And if the question is asked, I figured it'd be brought through planning, all snow removal will be removed off-site. It's a small building, it's four units, it's going to be maintained. And landscaping is all going to be enclosed, so they have their own yacht space. We did that specifically so they had their own private yacht. Thank you.
Is there anyone here, is there anybody else who wants to ask questions? Okay, this is the public hearing. This will not be the only opportunity. You'll have to speak on it. This will be back here on December 13th, and it will go to the planning board on the 29th of November. And so this will not be your only opportunity, but is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I am not closing the hearing. We will see you next month.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, members of the board.
I have, I'm gonna take one. 2022-28-320 Revere Beach Parkway, GVLP Corporation, DBA Vita Verde, for special permits to partially demolish and renovate the existing two-story structure, proposing a retail marijuana facility that does not meet current zoning requirements for use, alteration of non-conforming structure, and number and location of off-street parking spaces. Again, this is the first time we're hearing it, well, it's actually the third time we're hearing it, but it's the first time we're hearing it under this number, and it will be going to the, back here on December 13th and to the planning department, the planning board on 11/29.
If I may, Madam Chairwoman, Anthony Rossi, on behalf of the petitioner. I do, I'm not sure if you've got all these binders. They do? If everybody has one, if they don't have one, I can certainly provide it to any members of the board.
Okay. You have one for your record? Yeah, that would be.
I have a copy for the record.
Okay, great. I'm sure it's, yeah, it's in here. Right, now I have two.
If I may.
You may. You certainly may, sir.
As you stated correctly, I believe this was on in the past. I did not represent them in the past. I did have an opportunity to sit down with them to hear concerns that the board may have had in the past and also neighbors or any abutters and so forth. I do have a pretty big audience here today. I think a lot of the people here to speak in relation to this project, but more importantly, I want to talk a little bit about the differences, what was done at the prior presentation, which I wasn't privy to, but by looking at the plans and the architecturals and the civil engineering, it changed dramatically. So the original building, I'm not sure, John, can you, can you get that on the screen, by any chance?
John's doing double duty today, so.
If I may. So the original building was 14,000 square feet of a structure for this type of use. And the use, by the way, is allowed in this zoning by special permit by major site plan approval, which will be going through that process through planning board. I believe actually the planning board did recommend the prior site plan approval on a larger structure, but the structure that's being proposed now and the use, the building, is only going to be about 5,500 square feet. So it's literally cut down almost a third, 65%. They went back to the drawing board and saw what they really need for this type of use, and as a result of that, they actually doubled the amount of landscaping, increased the amount of parking. So the only relief as far as by special permit for this board is altering a non-conforming structure, a pre-existing non-conforming structure by special permit, and that's only because of the existing setbacks of the structure as a whole. We're not increasing it. It's actually one of the few times when you go for a special permit to increase. We're actually decreasing it as a whole. So we created more landscaping, more parking, and we cut the use by 65% of what was prior. The use is allowed by special permit with this board. And the other items were, there was three parking spaces that were short of, so we're proposing 16, and there's 19 required. So it's the minimus amount of parking relief that's being sought. And also, there was two out of three parking spaces of compact by right. One of them is relief required by the board by special permit, and that's the violations for the purposes of zoning. Just so they have that on the record. So, you know, there is actually no variances whatsoever being required from this, and everything has shrunk dramatically in size. And to work with planning, development, and also other issues that were addressed, I guess, on prior presentations and concerns they have. A little bit on this project, if I may, and I know the architect is running late and the civil engineer was coming on a plane, but I want to just talk about as far as access to the site. So it has an Adams Street access and also, as you can see from over here, loading dock. So when someone comes to load cannabis or what have you, it won't be visible as far as from the street. The loading dock is actually inside the building as a whole.
And what's the size of the transport that usually is used?
They're small, they're small trucks because they don't like to bring a large quantity at a given time. I'm sure you can understand why and security. Speaking of security, they will have on-staff security at all times on the site to monitor parking, to monitor traffic, and to monitor safety of anybody going in and out of the building. And so all the loading trucks will be done inside the building at hours that won't affect neighborhood. They only do it usually once or twice a week at most, based on the amount of usage is needed and so forth. But I want to note that, so as far as the neighborhood is a concern, everything is being done inside the building. And I know sometimes people are concerned regarding snow removal and trash. Trash is inside dumpster, not outside that's currently existing now. Everything is inside because with cannabis, you have to be very secure with the, you know, what's being dumped, especially if there's any proprietary information, because it could be medicinal and that governs on the hipper. So that's all being done inside with private trash pickup. So as far as the city is concerned, it's not affecting the city's garbage disposal and additional fees. Everything is being done on-site. Snow removal, same thing. In any condition down the road, if this was approved, it would be subject to all snow, cannot take any parking spaces away from, of the use or block any parking lanes. My client, one of my clients actually owns the structure, and as far as this project is concerned, they own numerous, numerous amount of properties, and they manage their properties excellent. And then during snow, they will have a Bobcat on-site when they have snow storms, and they're going to remove it immediately at the location. So you're never going to see a big pile of snow on the parkway per se, like you see on other sites, because they know it's a quite visible site. And that's one of the reasons, I think, if you look at the other marijuana special permit uses that are allowed in the city, you have one towards King Arthur's in that range down there, and you have another one on Broadway. This site here is pretty much an anchor site. It's on the parkway, it's quite visible. Everett does not have marijuana dispensary, Revere does not have marijuana dispensary, and Chelsea, this is like a border point for all those three cities. And if you look at the host agreement, which was negotiated with the city, the city gets a percentage based on the gross sales on it. And if I'm saying that incorrectly, please, I believe the host agreement is in the packet. So this could be one of those sites that generates quite a lot of money from the city, and they're going to be hiring city employees. I think it's one of the prerequisites. And Gladys Vega, who is the president of this establishment, who's actually in the first row, this will be the first site, I believe, that hopefully ever permitted in Chelsea from a Chelsea resident, a Chelsea community developer, and something from Chelsea as a whole. I think all the other sites were people coming in to Chelsea, but not people from Chelsea. And I can speak about Gladys, but I think most of the members of the board know who she is and what she's done with the community and development throughout the state. And she's currently with Leah Pianidozzi, who's in this first row. She's the current CFO, correct, of this establishment. They own another site together in Somerville, which went through all the approvals for cannabis, all approved by the state. It's actually currently under construction. So this is a development team that's quite familiar with this. And a lot of these cannabis developments, one of the biggest problems is that even if they get the approval, they don't have the financial backing, because it's not like you can go to a bank with this, because a lot of these are deregulated, regulated by the bank, because marijuana is still a regulated substance under the federal laws. This is a self-funded project. Even the other project they have is self-funded. So they're backed by their family real estate development, Mr. Pianidozzi, and other investors. So they're already fully grasped going forward. The building itself is owned by a trust who's also an investor on it. So as far as finances, this is something that if this was approved, they're going full steam. So it's not going to be like other projects. They get approved and then they can't get the backing. It's already there. And they have a development team that's quite impressive. If you look at it, you can see the background of Maria, who is also the CEO, who's also present. She was the CEO of a financial institution for many years. So they have a background that I can talk in-depth about, but I really don't want to drag this on it because it's the first meeting. But I want to talk about the traffic if I could, because I think the biggest concern, I think they had in the past, we're worried about the location and traffic. But if you really look at the traffic and you hear from Bob, you hear, yep, from MDM, and he'll talk about it, and this is a site, when you hear it and you see the traffic report, it's actually a good use. It's actually better than what's currently, was currently being operated there. And he can talk about the traffic study analysis, and he focuses this traffic study analysis based on this use also. So he's quite familiar with it, and that's what they specialize in. And I'd like to have Bob talk more in-depth about that.
Okay, Bob, make sure you use the microphone when you're speaking. Anthony, while you're up there, so what's the hours of operation?
Hours of operation, have they decided that yet? I'm not sure, Gladys. 10 to 9.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week, correct. Yes.
And how many people are going to be working here at one time?
Eight. Correct. And I would note, as the board is aware, under the city ordinance that allowed this type of use, first 90 days are by appointment only. So we do have a licensing board in the city that will control any type of license, which is this. So if there's ever a use or an issue of how everything's being operated, there, they have jurisdiction to.
Do me a favor, just because you were the one who was on the microphone, could you please reiterate for the microphone for the record what the number of employees, eight
Eight, eight employees.
And up to 15 as needed, if possible.
Yeah, they will have up to 15 employees if needed, but they shouldn't have more than eight. And if you look at the facility, the size of it, it really plans for eight, but you have to be ready if there is a need for additional employees to pack or what have you for the goods. We have up to 15 that's on the site.
So how many total employees, though? So it's eight, I mean, you're talking.
You're gonna have a total of 15 employees if needed.
And they're rotating.
And they rotate. Correct.
Okay, that's it. So, all right. Okay, thank you. You can take that right off. Yeah?
Thank you. For the record, Robert, the principal with MDM Transportation Consultants. We're based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. What we've prepared and submitted to the city is a traffic impact and access study that looks at and quantifies each of the intersections that are surrounding the property. And they're shown here in red dots. The most prominent of those include the Revere Beach Parkway Route 16 intersection at Garfield and Webster Avenue, right here. It carries more than 4,000 vehicles an hour during peak hours, very heavily traveled, is also a location that has a crash history, and qualifies it for funding under the state's Safety Improvement Program through what's known as the Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSEP, funding. That said, we've looked at that location, we've looked at both ends of Adams Street, which provide primary means of access into the property, including the historic retail use, Russo's, as well as the adjoining street at Wesley Street. We've gone out and looked at morning peak hours, commuter hours, evening commuter hours. We've looked at Saturday midday conditions for each of those locations. And to understand the relative impact of the project to each one of those locations, we've actually looked at how facilities like this operate over a typical hour. Interestingly, in the morning, this won't even be open during the traditional peak hour, peak hours. It will have an opening period, I believe, after nine o'clock in the morning. So unlike the existing retail use of the property, which actually has opened during those hours, it will actually generate very little, if any, traffic activity. Evening peak hours commuter, we expect that there would be between 50 and 60 vehicles or transactions per hour that would be generated for use like this. And that's pretty well borne out by operating facilities in the Commonwealth and industry standards for this type of a facility at that square footage, just over 5,000 square feet of space. A very small component of trips would be employee-related over those same hours. So relative to what's been there as a retail use, Russo's, we see that there's very little, in fact, there may be a benefit or a reduction in trips in the morning. There'll be a very slight difference, about 10 peak directional trips during a commuter hour at night. And on a weekend, there'll be a higher level of activity, but nothing that would be substantial or consequential to traffic operations. If we were to look at a snapshot in time, I'll focus on the weekday evening peak hour in particular, the site relative to the Route 16 quarter right here. Eight out of 10 trips that would be generated to or from the site would be mostly likely oriented to Route 16, about 10% from Garfield Avenue and 10% from Webster Avenue. So taking that 60-vehicle trip per hour number and applying those percentages, we see that over the course of a typical hour, we're talking about increases of 10 to 20 trips in any given stretch of roadway. It's slightly higher in this Route 16 section here because you've got to actually use Adams Street up to Wesley to return to the signal. Relative to the 4,000 vehicles an hour that currently travel through that intersection, this represents less than one-half of 1% change. This is not a consequential change in terms of traffic generation or impact. But importantly, we also understand the importance of parking. Under today's conditions, folks who would be going to Russo's would have very limited on-site parking. That will be vastly improved under this scenario. Unlike the Russo's operation, there'll be far less dependence, if any, on parking curbside along Adams Street. And in the most current iteration of the site plan, there will be 11 parking spaces in a main parking field, which is joining Adams Street and Route 16 in that corner. It's up there on the board. So those 11 parking spaces, in our estimation, would accommodate even the peak parking demand for this facility when it's fully operational. We've done a parking analysis that demonstrates that. The site has the added benefit of allowing up to five employees to be parked on the site as well, in addition to the patrons, plus the loading. All right.
Is it, are you saying there's five in addition to the 11, or the five?
There's 11 in the main field, and there's four spaces shown in cross-hatched pattern on the left side of that drawing.
And that would be for employees?
For employees, correct. And then you've got one space interior to the building, also available for an employee, plus the loading space. Right. In addition to that, there's a significant improvement to the driveway along Adams Street. That will actually be pulled away from Revere Beach Parkway. It will be curbed with a reconstruction of the sidewalk along the property. And the driveway itself would be 24 feet wide, standard commercial width. And flanking that driveway will be continued curbside parking available if needed. We don't anticipate the need for that, but it would, could additionally support patron use if necessary during peak periods. Finally, I'll say that the analysis that we've done does not take into account the mold shares that we know exist in and around the site based on census tract data. This area is served by public transportation. It's a walkable site to some degree. It's a bikeable site to some degree. We have not taken any credit for that in our estimates. We presumed that this site operates like a suburban site. All right? So we've taken a worst-case scenario, in our view, and estimated not only that immaterial impact from a traffic perspective, but the parking need on that basis. So we're confident that what's being proposed here, which is substantially more parking than what was originally contemplated for the use, will be adequate to serve the peak activity for the facility. There are incentives that the proponent is offering its own employees for parking off-site financially, a stipend of sorts. So to the extent employees need to park off-site or want to carpool together and park at a common location, there'll be an incentive offered by the proponent for that to happen. They'll pay for the parking. They will also fully fund MBTA passes for the employees of the use to incentivize the use of public transportation in addition. So there are a number of those types of incentives we think will go above and beyond in reducing the need for parking on the site. And finally, we'll also notice that the proponent is committed to monitoring the use at opening and on a continual basis to make sure that what's being proposed by way of parking supply operates appropriately and consistently. The last thing they want is for it not to work properly, and that will be actively managed by the proponent. And that's not uncommon for facilities like this in the Commonwealth. So with that, I'll hand it back to attorney.
Does anybody have any questions of the gentleman? Okay, go ahead. No, I mean, of the, on the traffic. Do you have any questions on the traffic?
On the traffic. John, John has questions on traffic.
Where are the proposed off-site parking for the employees?
There is no designated off-site parking location. The four plus one, the five spaces that are available would accommodate the needs of the employees, we believe, who need to arrive in a single vehicle, some of which will probably have an additional employ- some of which will probably have an additional employee with them as part of a commute to the facility. In the earlier application materials, there was some thought of leasing nearby parking through arrangements. That is not something that is proposed at this point, nor do we feel necessary, based on the shifts, if you will, for the employees that would be on the property and the likelihood that employees will not only be incentivized to find parking that the proponent will pay for, but also either to use public transportation, no vehicle, or bike, or carpool.
Well, that's what I'm asking. You said that the employees will be incentivized by being paid for off-site parking.
Yes.
Where is that off-site parking?
So, John, just to clear up, I apologize. So, I think what they're saying is if employees stay home and they carpool together, two or three people, they would get a stipend in their wages, and also they get a bus pass, they'll pay for the bus pass. If you look at the host agreement, the preference is to hire all Chelsea people, residents. So, one of the benefits here is that if we hire Chelsea residents at a premium wage, if you look at the host agreement, it talks about that, and you got five Chelsea residents, pretty much get to know each other, and they decide, hey, listen, let's take a, let's go together, they would get increased wages as a result of that. So, that's what the incentive program is. So, literally, we have those extra spots as overage, per se, not essentially that we want the five people to park there. We're going to incentivize that if we hire Chelsea residents and they work on the incentive program, that they would come together.
So, our street means at home?
Correct. It could be at home, it could be, they park in someone's house or nearby, what have you, but that's their goal, is that they do that together, they all benefit from that. That was just, I understand what John was saying, I just wanted to clear that up.
Yes, it does.
All right, in relation to that. I think Hugo, you had questions?
Okay, Hugo, you had some questions?
Yeah, which plan are you using? Because this tool, this shows ten parking spots, and that one shows eleven. So, which one are we using?
That might be, I apologize, that was the booklet that was prior, that might be an old plan. The plan we have right now, we have a total of sixteen parking spaces.
So, you're going for eleven?
Eleven, correct. It was amended to correct more landscaping, and we changed the entrance. So, that might be an old plan in that booklet. So, there were sixteen proposed parking spaces, eleven onsite there, four that you can see on the checkered mark, and one inside. So, there were sixteen.
Okay, what's the size, so those four parking spots, what's the size? From the drawing, it says to be like, you know, not the nine by?
So, there is essentially, out of the sixteen spots, only three of them are compact. Everything is nine by eighteen. Two of them meet the compact space requirement, and the third one is relieved being sought by the board. As far as the sizes, unless I can see it clearly, unless you know the answer.
Well, Hugo, are you trying to be sure that those spaces will just be used for, because they look like they're tandem or whatever, that they would just be used for employees? Or is that, is that what?
No, I'm just saying, because from here, it says that they're not enough with the measurements.
Okay, okay.
They're not, I don't know.
No, no, so Hugo, I apologize. I'm not sure if you heard me initially, out of the sixteen spots, thirteen of them meet the dimensional regs of nine by eighteen, two of them, you can meet the compact space requirement under the Chelsea ordinance, and the third one requires relief on the ordinance. I think it's eight by, it's eight by eighteen, I believe. So, they all meet the requirements, only one of them, the compact relief is sought by special permit. So, they all meet the requirements under the Chelsea ordinance.
Okay, at the moment, as of today, there's two trash barrels sitting in those four spots. You know who those trash barrels are?
No, we don't own the building, but we certainly can contact them and address it with the landlord.
And for some days, it was a car parked there with a flat tire. It was their part for a long time.
Again, we're the proponent to occupy the space. We don't actually occupy the space currently, but I can certainly address that with the landlord of the building to make sure that gets addressed.
How about the church? Is it upstairs, the church?
From my understanding, I don't believe there is a church upstairs. I can check. Again, we only, I only represent, I don't represent the landlord, I represent the petitioner for the location that they're going to be occupying, which is the first floor.
I assume the church won't be there when this, if this goes?
No, no, there's no church on the second floor. The second floor wouldn't be part of any usage whatsoever. In fact, if you read the actual decision, the denial letter specifically states that any use on the second floor would have to go before this board. It actually states that right in the denial letter.
How we will know that that second floor will be empty? How are we going to know that?
The city will monitor. This, we have a separate entrance, if you look at the architectural drawings, then the whole second floor, they have a separate egress, totally separate entrance from us. So, we have our own entrance and egress, and that second floor has its own entrance and egress. And again, this is a licensed, it will be a licensed site, so it'll be monitored by the City of Chelsea Licensing Board, and also the Inspection Services. And certainly, when you're doing this type of an operation, you're not going to try to put anything up that would affect this use. So, we stated already, and I believe in the denial letter, the commissioner, who's also the zoning enforcement officer, stated specifically in the denial letter, any use on the second floor would have to go before this board. You would have jurisdiction on that, you would have control over that.
Yeah, but how will we know if you're going to use as a storage space?
We can't, I mean, they can come at any time. It's the same as if you have other dispensaries, if they go on upstairs and they're using storage upstairs, you could do it. This is easily more monitored than other dispensaries that have been approved in Chelsea, because one of them is adjoining a mall, and they could have space in other spaces that anybody can do. This, we don't have access or control to it. We have our own entrance, a whole egress. We don't own it, we're not leasing that space.
You have no access to the second floor, no legal access to the second floor?
No, no legal access. We have our own entrance, and I would state that we're not leasing this space. And that's going to be something that's going to be filed, the lease is filed with the city, the lease is filed with the state, and I don't think anybody's going to purge themselves and risk losing their license by operating a second-floor space for any type of use.
Who's going to use that spot next to the door in dock? Who's going to use the parking space that is inside the door in dock?
Right, right now, we essentially expect an employee to use that or one of the operators, correct. We're thinking about the four overflow, to have that for overflow parking if ever needed.
You passed out this book. Is this the same book that was passed out back in September?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be, because.
If you're going to speak, please, and introduce yourself and say.
I'm Leah Pianerosi.
Give your address, please.
My home address? Three eleven Dale Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. So, some of this book is the same, but not the plans. So, our intention, our business plans that's in that book is all the same. Our officers all remain the same, but our plan to cut down the building that's different is in that book.
Basically, the plan, the size of the building, the landscaping, everything like that, that's been altered, which we just talked about. But as far as the officers, the financial report, the traffic analysis, the traffic analysis changed a little bit because of the amount of parking space that's being provided now than what was previously provided on the prior proceedings. I'm sorry. Yes.
So, the first one is that they're not, they don't own the building?
No.
They are going to be renting?
Yes.
How long is the lease for?
I'm not, how long is?
Ten years, ten years, five years?
They haven't finalized it yet, because I think it's subject to approval.
If you're going to talk?
Yeah, there's a memorandum requirement that we're going to be filed with it, but it would be essentially a long-term lease.
Okay, and then they're going to be managing the common areas?
Yes.
So, the management, so the owner will manage the property and take care of snow removal, lighting?
Triple net lease. It would be basically lighting, cleaning, landscaping, everything whatsoever, because they're taking over that site.
Great, and then regarding the traffic, so with the study that you did, what are your recommendations for people that visit the site with respect to entering and exiting the building? To prevent, you know, accidents, because, I mean, I think it's great that they expanded the parking lot, because Russo's was three parking spots, and they were there for years, and people managed to go there without problems. They've taken the initiative to expand the parking lot, which is great, I think, because there's more parking for people that are going to be visiting the property. But I'm curious as to whether you've made any recommendations on how traffic should flow into the parking lot and out?
The, we haven't actually made specific recommendations, but I'll point out that the driveway, by being designed sixty-five feet distant from Route sixteen, actually allows that upper end of Adams Street to function quite well as a two-way, frankly. So, you can get to or from that parking lot from the Route sixteen side entirely. To the left of the driveway on this, there'll be parking availability curbside for at least four vehicles, above and beyond any demands that are created within the lot itself. So, and we're not proposing to do anything on the left side or upper side of Adams Street. You know, we understand that there's a left-turn restriction there today, there's stanchions, we've heard that through prior testimony. The fact that we're improving accessibility to the site and providing onsite parking that doesn't currently exist, and orienting that traffic to Route sixteen is going to be a vast improvement, in our opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to, I know there are a number of people here to speak on this. This is not going to, did you want to say something, Anthony?
No.
Okay, this is not the only opportunity one will have to speak, but I'm going to ask people to limit their initial testimony to five minutes, to give everybody a chance to talk, and then if after that, if you have questions that haven't been addressed by other people, you can speak again. So, who would like to speak? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Listen, ma'am, please identify yourself, your name and address, and your five minutes starts now.
Sure, my name's Joanne Woodland. I own the building at two Adams Street, across from this proposal.
Could you speak a little more directly into your microphone? I'm sorry.
I have, I was wondering if the town could hire their own traffic engineer? I'm not sure it is valid to take all that the applicant's engineer is saying. I question a lot of those assumptions and conclusions. I do think the traffic is seriously going to increase. It is a very narrow two-way street. We have problems with parking, traffic, access for emergency vehicles. It's happened to one of my tenants. I did speak with the deputy fire chief, who told me that one of his trucks was actually in an accident at that intersection about a month ago. With this new plan, the sidewalks are going to now be enlarged to be concrete with granite curbs, which means the cars will no longer be parking right up against the building like they do now. That will make the street narrower. I pull out of my apartment building, sometimes it takes me like eight-point turn. I don't understand, last meeting, it was, I was told ten employees, now it's eight. Might be fifteen. I don't know where they're going to park. I see that they've increased parking. I have a question about the easement parking. I don't know, I don't see two spaces per unit for that house that's there, which I am required to have in my building. I question the lack of a dumpster space. I'm required to have one, I don't know if they will be.
He said they'll have them inside.
Okay. I also have, you know, big concerns about mostly emergency vehicles. Also, we have, I know it's a marijuana facility, I understand that it's primarily medical marijuana, but in my building, we have a small little vestibule where the mailboxes and doorbells are. And we've had drug addicts go in that vestibule and do drugs and urinate and just do everything before we catch them. I have problems with a drug facility across the street from me. We have children and elderly in that building. I'm concerned about the late hours. But mostly, I stand here and I, sorry, question some of the assumptions that the attorney is making and the traffic engineer. They're being paid by the applicant. I hope that you have as much cynicism as I do. And I guess that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who we should just speak on this?
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Judith Garcia, City Councilor of District Five of the City of Chelsea. Address is one thirty-eight Walnut Street. I am here to speak in favor of this project, and I am speaking in favor, I've, for the past eight years, I've represented District Five, which is the heart of Chelsea. I've had the opportunity to work very closely with many business owners, some that are very great. And when I look at this project and I see the applicant Gladys Vega, a pioneer in this community, someone that I grew up watching, observing, fighting for us, feeding our families and individuals during the pandemic, making sure that people were sheltered. I can't think of a better business owner than her for this dispensary. The first woman, the first Latina, the first Chelsea resident who would be able to open up a cannabis dispensary in our community. It's important also to highlight that this community voted overwhelmingly, eighty-two percent, back in 2016 in favor of recreational marijuana. So, when I see a local resident applying for this, I can't trust anyone better than her. I can't trust anyone better than Gladys Vega, who has been a woman that follows rules by the book, who has been leading as an activist in this community, but above all, who created a food pantry out of nickels and dimes, right? And that was something that was very successful. I can't think of someone better than running a cannabis dispensary that's going to generate thousands of dollars in taxes, but above all, it's going to be tax money that's going to come back to our community, and I'm sure that she's going to be innovative, and she will be the person who will be able to push for that money to be invested in our community. So, I am fully in support of this. I understand that there's many technicalities that need to be answered, and there are many technicalities that need to be dealt with, but I ask you, and I commend you for your work. I commend you for the questions that you're asking, but I ask you to very look closely in favor of a person who's a local, a person who has given so much to this community and who's willing now to be a business owner of a cannabis dispensary that can be a model for other cities. So, thank you so much.
Joe, did you have a question for her?
No, I don't have a question for the applicant. With regards to Mr. Rossi.
You're okay, thank you, Judith.
You weren't at the first go-around with this. And unfortunately, I think anybody in the city knows Gladys and all the great work she has been done. She's done phenomenal work for the city. But what you're here today is for particulars relative to body of laws in the city. So, if we can refrain from all the greatness of the people, because we know how great they are, if we just stick with what we're here for, because we have several other cases here, and there are people waiting to be heard. Thank you.
And I will state that if you heard my presentation, as much as I love Gladys, it was very limited on Gladys, it was more of the issues before this board, and that's what I dealt with as far as with a redesign and comments and concerns that I was told on the prior proceeding with additional parking and landscaping and so forth. And I will ask people that are members of the public here that are here to speak in favor of it and to limit it, and we can say you support Gladys, but just limit it to that at this stage.
You're free to clearly say you support the project. We really want to be sure, we want to hear from people who want to support the project, obviously. And, you know, and Gladys is part of the project, and we appreciate that. But what we're, so, we'd really like to hear your thoughts about the project, so that's good.
No, no, your presentation was excellent.
Thank you.
Just that sometimes people like to be a little more vocal.
I get it.
And we know how great they are, the people that are going to run this organization, the needs of the city, but we have laws, and this is what we're trying to do. So, those people that do want to say something, if you sort of guide them.
Got you.
So, we will accept as given that Gladys has been a great support for the city, so I don't want to diminish that at all. So, I mean, I don't want to diminish that at all.
No, absolutely, I understand, thank you.
But we really want to hear about people's thoughts about the project. Who would like to speak next on this? Please, come in. Give your name and address, please.
Yes, Marianne Estes, three seventy-three Crescent Avenue, Chelsea. Full disclosure, I am a counselor for District Three. Full disclosure, I'm also an employee at La Colaborativa, but I am standing here today testifying as a community member, long-term Chelsea resident, Chelsea girl who has seen this community flourish. I will limit my comments, because some of my colleagues have already shared, but I want to share that, you know, I've been here before, talking for, in support of other projects who are being proposed by local agencies, local nonprofits, local leaders. And I just want to emphasize that when I hear the questions that came up, I believe, his name is Hugo?
Hugo, yeah.
Hugo, yes. I really appreciate those questions. Those are the types of questions that we need to be asking when we are having conversations about new development, because they really do impact our community. What has happened in that property? What are we going to see happen in that property? How much can we trust that this new developer is going to stick by their word?
How much can we trust that this new developer is gonna stick by their word, right? And so when I come up here, I evaluate thoroughly what I've seen in my community. You know, the substance abuse is through the roof. Yes, it is. But what are property managers doing to control that? I, I get residents calling me all the time, because property managers also have their diligence to support in getting families re, connected to resources, connecting to their local police department, trying to get that person's support, but also maintaining that property at its best, at its best state, because it does impact the greater community. At the same time, I think that that only comes from local developers. It only comes from people who take pride in this community, people who have something to lose if that property is not ran correctly. And I think this is a project that we can guarantee, that if the property is not being ran correctly, the person in charge of that, of that, of this project and the person who has put their name on this project throughout all the hearings, you know, you guys have heard Gladys Vega, Gladys Vega, these are people who will go above and beyond to make sure that does not happen, which is something we won't have if it's an outside entity that's coming in and just generating profit. And so I do wanna make sure, and I wanna also thank you for those questions that were made, because we have to make these evaluations. What has worked in this area, what could work in this area? And who are we allowing to continue to develop in these areas of our community? Whether it's this property or future properties that come in front of you. You will see me here when I hear of a local agency, local nonprofit, local leader that I know has been there, rolled up their sleeves and worked hard to create Chelsea to what it is today, because I trust those people to continue to make Chelsea thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, this won't be your only oppor, oh, I'm sorry, Roseanne?
I just wanna say, I'm not here with Green Roots.
Say your name formally, again.
Roseanne Bon Giovanni, 7 Bell Street. So I'm here as a neighbor to this development. And I have to give you some background that I don't love, you know, cannabis facilities. And I was on the licensing commission and hated when they came in front of us, because I felt like this wasn't the future that we wanted for the city. But as Counselor Garcia said, we voted in favor of this in 2016. And so whether we like it or not, they're coming to our city. And I think what's really important for us to consider is that we could give these licenses to outside folks that come in and get rich off the backs of folks in Chelsea. Or we can value the people who live here, who've worked here, who love this community and have a history of working with the community. So I am in support of this project. And I, I know that there are a number of questions that came up, including parking and traffic. And those are real concerns. And I applaud the proponents for working through those challenges and those concerns. I do wanna say one thing, is that, you know, there was a concern from a resident or business owner that was nearby about drug use. Drug use is rampant in our community, and, and that's opioids. I don't think it's marijuana. Think that's opioids, and we need to address the opioid concern. But if there's one person, I have faith in this community, will run her business with so much dignity and respect and accountability and responsibility. It's the proponent who's proposing this tonight, because she, she knows what it's, what, what the effects are of drug use in our community. And I, I know and trust that she will run this business perfectly and that in three or four years' time, we'll look back and say this, you know, we got it right. I also wanna say that my parents were opposed to the cannabis facility on Webster Ave when that was being proposed, and I was on licensing, and so I didn't say anything. I think I withdrew from that process. But now that it's there, there are no problems, right? There's not a lot of traffic, there's security outside. I run by it all the time, walk by it, I'm there. There are no concerns. I think we have preconceived notions that these facilities are gonna be negative influences in our community. And I would argue that the liquor stores and the bars that we're permitting are far worse than these facilities. And so I would encourage you to work through the logistical concerns, but to support this project.
Thank you. All right. Time out. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this again? There'll be others who, you have an opportunity to come back in December. Anthony?
Yeah, I just wanna briefly talk about one of the, the neighbors had some concern, and I understand the concern. If I was in the butter, you know, I'd wanna know what's going on. But I wanted, I know you emphasized that there is a dumpster, and the dumpster is inside the building. I know she heard that, but I wanted just so the record would hear that. And one of her concerns is by doing the sidewalk and so forth, which allowed the entry to come in, she was concerned that now cars park on the street. She does an eight-point turn. That would never happen again, because we're gonna have security onsite. And now they can park inside the dwell, inside the parking lot. In fact, by having this type of use here, it will alleviate all that parking that take place that's currently being done, that they park on the curbing. So this type of use actually would alleviate that issue down the road. And then there was one more thing we got in the easements. And I, and I can talk about the structure beside it. That easement was already purchased for the owner. It runs with the land. It does not affect the grandfathered use that, that abutting property. We don't own the property, and I don't believe the current owner of the building owns the property. It was just four easement spaces that went down the road with Russell's Tax Legal and zoning enforcement officer, Michael, the commissioner, has already effectuated that those four spaces go with this property. So I just wanna clear those items up that she might not be aware of. But I do wanna clarify that the biggest concern she has now, that she mentioned, won't be taking place. Especially if there's drug use taking place in the neighborhood, you're gonna have security, you know, onsite with a well-lit building, which if you walk by the area now, it's not a well-lit building. And we've taken the building back with green space and so forth, that I think a lot of her concerns will go away based on what we're currently being proposed. I just wanna emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Again, so this is going to come back here on December 13th. Goes to the planning board on 11/29. If you want, you know, and the, the public hearing is still open, so you'll have an opportunity to speak on this again, if you wish, on December 13th.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. Okay, so here's, I have a question. So, let's get Roseanne up here. She's hugging people, so. So with this, so Joan is not here. So I'm gonna ask, so we need four out of five votes. So to get, we need at least four votes to get to pass anything. Joan is not here, and Marilyn cannot, can't speak on this one. So are, I'm gonna ask her if she's comfortable with that. But are you guys, I'm sort of taking a straw poll. Are you guys comfortable with that? Are you comfortable with that? Marilyn can't vote on this, and she wasn't here last month, and Joan isn't here. So we will, and we need four out of five votes for, to take an action. On the next case.
Is this 2229?
Uh, 59 Pearl Street, yeah. So I just wanna make sure that people recognize that, you know. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna basically say, are people comfortable saying that they're okay?
Yeah, I, I did straw poll at the last case.
Straw, yeah.
I did that just to make sure.
Straw poll?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Straw poll?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Where'd she go, Roseanne? Where'd she go? Okay, Roseanne, this is 2022-2959 Pearl Street, Roseanne Bon Giovanni, Green Roots. Roseanne, what I was saying, so Joan?
I explained it.
Oh, you just explained, I'll just explain to you. Okay, all right. So this is special permit to permit a teaching kitchen in the waterfront upland district. John, what did the planning, what did the planning board say?
The planning board voted recommendation, voted that the zoning board allow the special permit with conditions.
Standard conditions and exterior lighting and signage.
And signage.
Okay. Now, again, this public portion of this is open. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this matter? There being none, I am closing the public portion of this hearing. Roseanne, just to confirm, you have made no changes to this plan than what you submitted to us last month?
We made, we've made no changes.
No changes.
We've just updated the information or details on signs for John.
Right, but that would be part of those. But you've not made any, anything?
No.
And John's gonna go tell people to be quiet? It's amazing how a lot of people can get. So, I don't wanna do anything until he comes in, says he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna write down who's making the motions. He's nicer than I am at this. Good job. I know, it was good. I did. Okay, so is there anybody here who wishes to make a motion on this? Joe?
With regards to case 2022-2959 Pearl Street, Roseanne Bon Giovanni, Green Roots, for a special permit to permit a teaching kitchen in the waterfront in the waterfront upland district, I make a motion to approve.
With the conditions that John articulated. Standard conditions, exterior lighting to be dark sky compliant, and signage plan to be submitted. Is that agree?
Yes.
Second? Arthur, all in favor? So you have four votes. You're not speaking, you're not voting?
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. The next one in front of us is 2022-3018 Garland Street, Lee Spohriona, for a special permit to create two parking spaces at a discontinued curb cut. Again, this is the first time we'll be hearing this, so we will not be deciding it today. It will go to the hearing, it will go back here on December 13th and to the planning board on 11/29. Okay, you gotta go to the planning board on November 29th. So could you please introduce yourself and your address and tell us what you're looking for?
Rod Rivera. I'm the designer and also construction supervisor for the.
And what'd you say your name was, I'm sorry?
Rod Rivera.
Uh-huh, and your address?
97 Beach Street in Malden.
Thank you.
So I'm only here to speak on behalf of the owner. So he started this project, he, he started this project with another contractor, and the contractor told him that he, they need a permit to do this work. So he assumed that was correct. He allowed him to do the work. The city building department came down, told him that he had to stop and pull a permit. Mario Martin, which is the new contractor taking over the project, he addressed that issue by applying, but the building department told him that he has to come in front of the board and at least try to get the answer from you guys, or at least approval from you guys to allow to do this parking space.
Okay, so tell us, tell us what, what you're proposing.
So the property itself.
What you've done, I should say.
I'm sorry.
What you've done. Go ahead, because it's done.
Well, the property itself had already a curb cut there, but the, the building department claims it was discontinue.
Where's the curb cut?
It's, it's marked.
I just wanna.
It's actually marked.
Ah, okay, all right, thank you.
I think the mortgage partner was sort of better. The next one, we're sure better. I don't know if you're gonna be able to.
Okay, go ahead, Suka.
But in any event, so basically, the way he wants to propose is do two tandem parking spaces and that, and that, the way it's designed. And he cannot go any further back, because it's shrink towards the back, although he has plenty of space in the back.
I'm sorry, I'm really having a hard time understanding what you're, what you're saying. I apologize.
So right now, as, how you see the rectangle spaces there, that's nine by eighteen? That's where the proposed parking space would be for the two vehicles. Towards the back, he cannot go any further back, because it starts shrinking towards, it'd be narrower. So there's.
If, if, unfortunately, if you just speak into the microphone rather than looking at that.
Pick it up and walk over. If it's easier, pick it up and walk over. That might be easier. There you go. This way we make everything.
Okay. So I, what do you want me to?
No, I saw, so now.
So it's, I saw, towards the back of the building, it's harder to park any vehicles, because it shrinks. And although he has plenty, plenty parking space, I mean, space in the back, but there's no way to pull in or pull out. So basically, we asking for you guys to grant us permission to at least do the two tandem at, at the minimum.
So you basically want a curb, you want the curb cut reinstated, so you can break two tandem spots in there?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, is there, does anybody park on this? Is that, somebody parked there now? Are you, are we losing a parking spot by you doing that?
No, he actually wants to do it so he could have an off-street parking during the wintertime and also during the, throughout the whole year.
So that's it? Okay, so that's what it looks like? Okay.
Well, that's what's there right now. There was, there was dirt higher, and apparently the contractor that started doing the work brought it to that level.
Okay, we have, so just so you know, and we're not gonna be deciding this today, but curb cuts, there are requirements about when you have a curb cut, how it's gotta be, and John will walk through that, how it has to be flat, and there's all kinds of little requirements on it when we, when we agree to a curb cut. So John, is there anything that we're, I'm missing on this? They basically, because there is a curb, so there's a curb cut right there now.
Yeah, that's.
So basically, somebody probably wouldn't park there right now, because they would think it's a parking lot. So what I'm saying, we're not losing a parking space on the street?
Technically, no, and you're picking up two on, on.
And off the street. Okay, that's why I wanted to be sure.
Is the curb cut gonna be widened? Is it, are they gonna open it up a little bit more, or is that the, the standard size?
Is that curb cut, are you requesting that curb cut to be widened?
We were planned to not touch it, because since he's already spent the money on another contractor, he won't be able to afford to increase the height.
It's a legit curb cut, right? I mean, like, size-wise?
It's 10 foot six right now.
Yeah, that's plenty to get a car in.
What?
That's plenty to get a vehicle.
And it looks level.
It looks level, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, in the back, it says there's a shed in the back. On the back of the house, on the plan.
That, that is a shed.
There's a shed, right? But when I go to the other side, it's a garage with two doors. So there's been, is it garage or is it shed?
So there is, he claims there is a garage towards the back, but no cars could fit in there.
Well, the car has two doors, two garage doors. I mean, a, a small car could fit there. I mean, it has a, a car cap already too.
But you say it's not a, it's not a legal curb cut?
The only thing he uses it for right now is for storage, his tools.
The storage.
But this would take two cars off the street?
That is correct.
Is this for a single-family house or is it a multifamily house?
That's a two-family house.
So who will be using just the first floor?
Correct. Probably both, both tenants would use them, but.
How long was this car cut? How long was it? How long has it been like that?
For a long time. He's, when he bought the property, it was already there.
So it's been used as a driveway, I assume?
Correct. I mean, right now, as we stand, he is using the space as a parking, but only one car's there right now. And he actually wants to legalize it by finishing. And once the permit is granted, he's gonna be able to park the two cars that he's requesting for.
Joan, how will we know that shed is not used as a parking garage? Is there any, the one in the back of the house?
I tried to get onto Google Maps to see what it looked like, but I can't get access to the website here, so I did not, I'll have to check that after the meeting before the next meeting.
Is there anybody who wishes to comment on this? There being none, this will not close the public portion of the hearing. We will keep it open. You need to come back here on the 13th of December and to the planning board on the 29th of November. And the planning board meets here in this room as well. Okay? Thank you. Next, 2022-31, 13 Bell Street, Joseph and Mary Ann Carroll, for a special permit seeking approval for the construction of a shed, which does not meet the minimum side yard setbacks. As with the last one, we won't be deciding this today. We'll, you have to come back here on December 13th. Excuse me, John, do you want to see if she needs, did you talk to her already about the translation stuff? You all set with it? You wanna talk to her? Sorry, just, if just somebody doesn't need translation, we can let her go home. So you have to come back here on the 13th of December, and you have to go to the planning board on the, because it's a special permit, it has to go to the planning board on November 29th. Okay? So we won't be deciding today. We can't decide it today. We have to come back here on December 13th, okay? So why don't you tell us? I assume, I assume you're Mr. Joseph Carroll. Could you please introduce yourself and give us your address and tell us what you're looking for?
My, my name's Joseph Carroll, and this is my wife, Mary Ann Carroll, and we live at 13 Bell Street. And we're here for a special permit to build a shed that's 14 by eight. It's 112 square feet. And on one side, it doesn't meet the five-foot requirement. And we're looking for a special permit to, to build the shed.
John's just gonna show us something, so we can see what it looks like.
There's two feet of clearance, if this shed is built, there'll be two feet of clearance there'll be two feet of clearance between the side of the shed and the fence. So there'll be enough room to maintain the fence, to work in there.
And there's a fence there, so it's, and is it your fence?
There's a fence, yes.
It's your fence, though?
It's my sister's fence.
Well, I, okay, so it's a family fence. But it's not a fence that's technically part of the property?
Yeah. And the shed's going to be built by a reputable company, one of the biggest, best reputable countries in the area. It's, it's going to be aesthetically, it's going to look nice, it's going to be sited like the house. It's not going to be something that's just going to be thrown up there. And.
And so John, is it just the minimum yards? It's just the side yard setback is the only issue?
Just a side yard setback, yes.
And it's two feet next to a fence, not encroaching on somebody's property directly?
Correct.
That's why I just want, so that's why I said there's a fence there.
Just for history, you may recall the, the Carols were here a couple of months ago, looking for relief. This part of this parcel was actually part of the 519 Washington Ave. His sister, decades ago, they had given the land over here to be allowed to be used for a driveway. The board gave the relief required to allow it to be absorbed into the parcel. It will be going to the planning board on November 29th, to sign the A and R plan to make it official. And then.
The area where the shed's going and on the other side of fence, it's an area that's not used. And on the back, it's six feet from the back fence. And that area is just for parking, so it's not.
But again, it's just a fence.
It's not to obstruct anybody, you know, be in anybody's way or anything, you know, so.
Any questions?
The shed is just to be used for storage?
Storage.
The shed is just for storage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to, okay, here, so you go.
Can you move the shed so you can make the setbacks requirement? Can you move the shed? No, there's no room?
No, because the existing, if you look at the photo, the existing area where the shed's going to go, it's an old patio, and it's a perfect concrete patio. And it's a perfect base for the shed to go on. And the shed's going to go right out to the edge of it. And so, you know, we can't move it over, make it a major expensive project. So right now, it's, it's like a perfect base for it to sit on. And you know, and it's not that big, you know?
I'm sorry, I thought I had a photo of the, here, it's right there.
So it's right there, okay. But it's right there near the shed and it's not going to, all right. Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? Roseanne? My goodness, you're getting your money's worth today.
I just want to say that 7 Bell Street, I live across the street from the Carols. They're awesome neighbors, totally responsible, great people. You should give them the shed, they're amazing, great. This shed won't impact any, anybody in, on our street or the opposite street.
Thank you. You can go home now.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so we won't be deciding today, there's nobody, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? No. So you've got to come back here on December 13th. And you have to go to the planning board on 11/29. Got it? Have any questions, give John a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, 2022-32-416 Crescent Ave, El Barojas, public hearing. I'm sorry, we're going to, again, not be deciding this today, same as sale, same as the other stuff. You've got to come back here on December 13th. You've got to go to the planning board on November 29th, okay? Yeah, that's fine, that works wherever you can, the microphone. Take the microphone, just introduce yourself, both of you, and your name and address, and tell us what you're looking for.
Hi, I'm El Barojas from 471 Eastern Avenue. I am, I'm here to support my client, Juan Pimentel. You can introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Juan Pimentel, resident of 416 Crescent Ave.
Thank you.
Chelsea.
Currently, he owns a mixed-use property, and we're trying to convert from a mixed-use to a two-family unit. Right now, there is a convenience store on one of the sides of the units. It's called La Mesa Market, where they sell cooked food. It's kind of a convenience store. Property right now, again, has the convenience store and another unit, about nineteen hundred square feet. Right now, the property is in this benefit for many reasons. There's parking issues, because there's cars coming in and out. There's a lot of traffic, trash, a lot of noise, complaints from neighbors. The neighborhood right now is currently sold for a one- and a two-unit properties. And right now, this supermarket is a dis-benefit to everyone. So we want to put it as a two-unit property.
Say that again?
We want to put this as a two-unit property.
Okay, and you want to get rid of the rest, the store?
We want to get rid of the store.
John, is this met, this is, this is appropriate for the area?
It is an I-1 district, retail use is not allowed there. Two families are allowed, but on seventy-five hundred square feet.
And you're not planning on any structural changes to the bill? Well, I guess you would not make it bright green.
Not at all.
So you, are you going to, you're not going to make the building larger, but you would, I assume, change the facade?
Not at all.
You're not going to change the facade at all?
We're not, well, it's going to be a unit. It's going to be two to three bedrooms on the unit where the market is now. But in reality, we're not going to stretch it out or anything. We're going to work inside to do the bathroom, do the kitchen.
But you're going to change the outside appearance?
Well, yeah, the outside with the paint and take the signs down and so forth.
Okay, but you're not building, you're not going up, you're not expanding?
Not at all, no.
And you're proposing a three-bedroom unit in there?
Yes.
How much is, how much is square footage?
It's, it's about twelve hundred square feet right now.
But you said nineteen hundred?
Total.
Oh, total, okay.
The unit upstairs is very small.
That I live in, I would like to make a bigger space for myself downstairs and rent out the top.
So you're planning, you would plan to move down to that spot, so?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good, right?
How many bedrooms?
I, three bedrooms, to make three bedrooms in the grocery store.
Three?
Yes. Currently have two, only two upstairs of like seven hundred square feet. Not enough for a sixteen-year-old daughter and a nine, ten-year-old boy.
Oh, dear.
Now, the store that's on the first floor doesn't have a lease, so we're working something out with her as well, for her to be able to leave.
Yeah, of course, we, you know, that's, we can, whatever authority we give you or approve or don't approve, that has nothing to do with the lease requirements.
That's understood.
We can't deal with that, okay.
Is it currently occupied or is it empty?
It's currently occupied.
That's, they said they have a, they have a lease right now, and they said they have to work on, you know, we, even if we approve this, that doesn't mean it takes away her lease rights, so. Any questions?
Are you able to provide us, like, are you able to provide us a floor plan of what, what the unit's going to look like? For the next meeting?
Yes.
If possible?
Okay, that would, yeah, that would be helpful.
That would be, that would be great. And there's a back entrance as well? There's a, or is it just one point of?
There's a back entrance.
Yeah.
What I wanted to say was, we really were not going to get into doing any plans till we went ahead with, because of the expense of that.
Okay. Or maybe just draw some.
We could probably do that.
If that's acceptable, John. I'm not sure if that's, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that we're going to, you're going to need parking issue, there's going to be no parking. You're going to want to look at some changes, I assume, is the, is this, is the sidewalk theirs or is it the city's?
If you look at the, the site plan, shows that a portion of the sidewalk, or what appears to be sidewalk, is actually part of the parcel.
Because we, I mean, one of the things that we would probably want to look at, one of the things, you know, if you're not going to have this bright green, lime green thing there, would you put on, putting any plants? Stuff like that, you know, we want, John would, usually the planning department would want to look at some kind of greenery in the front, that kind of stuff. If you're going to change windows, we need to know that.
Okay.
So, you know, we clearly, I mean.
The door, the door's going to, it's probably going to change from commercial to like a residential door. It's probably glass or, you know, you want to switch that out.
Okay, so anything that is visual, we're going to want, you know, we may not, we as a board may not approve, but we're going to probably, if we approve this, tell you to work with the planning department to make it look good.
The board usually puts a condition of design review.
Right.
Which means that, assigned to me to make sure that the building fits in with the neighborhood and looks residential, et cetera.
And has plants and that kind of stuff.